Turn myself on here. I am now opening the third session of the annual town meeting. Now, for anyone that wasn't at one of the earlier two sessions, this is a long-delayed third session of two town meeting sessions we had at the beginning of May. We have, I believe, seven articles left, of which only one is generally substantive. I apologize for the warmth. The air— I'm not sure if the air conditioning is on, but this much air takes a long time to cool down. So, I'm guessing this is the temperature—we have is the temperature we're going to have through the meeting. If anyone needs a drink—I think there's a working bubbler in the cafeteria where you checked in—and if you need to go out there and get a drink, we are being televised out in a TV out in that room so that the checkers are available. I'm not going to go through any of the introductions or other procedures. If anyone has questions on policies and procedures, we have a book on town meeting procedures. There's a number of copies up on those—the risers just inside the entrance here. So, I guess at this point, we should take a motion. I'm not sure who is Mr. Salvi. You're gonna—
Article 34. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $1 million, appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $450,000, and appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $436,000—
A little louder if you could, Mr. Salvi.
—for a total of $1,886,000 for the purpose of funding all costs related to the construction work in making roadway improvements to a portion of Route 117 in the Lower Village as identified and defined in the current plans and specifications developed by the planning board, including payment of any incidental costs and administrative expenses related thereto.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before I take any recommendations, Mr. Salvi, could you read those three amounts or the four amounts again, just because I didn't quite hear?
Certainly, Mr. Moderator. To borrow the sum of $1 million, to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $450,000, appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund $436,000, total $1,886,000.
Thank you. We'll take a recommendation from Capitol Planning.
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning would like it noted that from our perspective that the planning on the Lower Village project leaves much to be desired. Nonetheless, we believe the town has few good choices in the matter, and so we voted to recommend the town approve Article 34.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee concurs with the Capitol Planning sentiments, and we reluctantly recommend this for approval.
Thank you. And I believe the selectmen have a recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support Article 34. This is the best and the only way to finish the project that we started a while ago. The numbers are certainly quite disappointing to all of us, but at least in this iteration, as you will see in a few moments from the presentation, the engineering that has been done gives us much more comfort that it is well thought out, everything is in there, and that the numbers will not shift. We embarked on this a while ago, promising—taking state funds and promising the state that we would build a roadway to certain standards. This is the only way to build that road to these standards, and for these reasons, we fully support Article 34.
Thank you. And, just a reminder, I just muted my phone—if we could mute phones and other electronic devices. And I believe we have a presentation on why this amount from Mr. Stedman from the Planning Board, and he has a non-voter engineer that we voted to allow to address the meeting way back in the first session in early May. So I will hand it over to them.
Do we have a clicker? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jesse Stedman. I'm the Town Planner here in Stowe, and I'm up here today with Tom Bigelow from Green International Affiliates. And Tom will be talking about some of the technical aspects of this project. What I wanted to do, start quickly here, is just kind of explain what we learned at the last town meeting and what has happened since that time, how things have changed, and where we've determined to be heading from there, and then we'll kind of wrap it up with kind of some bigger picture thoughts. So, at the last town meeting, we heard a lot of concern about the underlying aspects, the foundation of the traffic design. So that was one thing that we needed to go back and spend a little bit of time looking at, and we do have some findings to share with town meeting today on that. We heard a lot about the access to the cemetery and some of the other details around Lower Village Cemetery. So, we have had site walks, we've had joint boards meetings, we've had various correspondence, and so I want to take some time to address that tonight as well. And then I really want to just go over some of the cost reduction aspects of this project that we tried to undertake as these numbers became apparent. Obviously, they're larger, larger than anybody, I think, had thought, and so we want to talk about what the alternative analysis looked like and how we weighed different options to come up with a design approach that we could feel comfortable with and that we could realize that we can actually get done, complete, and have the project finished in the way that we had originally intended. So, since that alternatives analysis was completed, we've been following up with the abutting property owners. I see many faces in here that we've talked to on many occasions now. One of the core aspects of this project is making them whole, getting this done for their sake, given that they are the ones right now that are taking the brunt of a stalled project. We've got 100% design plans and an estimate that our designer, Green International, provided. We did that review of the traffic analysis, and the plan from the beginning was that we wanted to go forward this time around with an actual cost from a contractor rather than rely on an estimate, which we did in 2017 and which brought us here. And we have since been able to work with the contractor, ETNL, to talk about further ways that we can really dig down and think about how to save some costs here and there. So we're going to be talking about that as well. I just want to remind everybody quickly who the group was that's been working on this for this time now. The Planning Board originally was the, you know, the sponsor of the project. They worked on it for almost 12 years, as I've described at other town meetings past. But in the last several months here, certainly after November of last year, we got a new group together, kind of added a few members to the folks who had been helping move this project along. And so, that includes our building commissioner, our superintendent of streets, of course, former select persons, Chair of the Planning Board, myself, Planning Department staff, and then our peer reviewer engineer with Places Associates, who we've worked with for a long time and we felt really would help us understand the technical aspects of this project that Green would bring to it and help us assess whether or not we were heading in the right direction, certainly after everywhere we've been, that was a crucial element here. So we've been providing the Planning Board back with all of this information. We're working with Green and ETNL to try to really think about not only how is the project designed, but how does it get constructed and where are those ways that we can find little inroads into saving some costs and what is it, obviously, a big project now. So, I think with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tom to talk about some of the primary designs.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. Yes, these are just some of the primary objectives of the design that we started to look at when we started the job this spring. Roadway grading corrections, I'll be going over these in more detail, but also increased drainage system capacity, improving the drainage of the roadway surface itself, which is called the spread of the roadway, and also correcting grading and drainage deficiencies on the abutting properties. There's steep slopes out there now, some issues with how the improvements tie into the abutting properties, so that was another thing we looked at. And also, since the last town meeting, when we were here last, we've also looked at the traffic analysis that was performed by the previous design engineer. Next slide, please. So the first thing that we looked at was the roadway grading corrections. The original design did not meet MAST-DOT standards. There were flat cross slopes, which is the slope of the road from the middle of the road down to the curb, also flat profile slopes. And what that can lead to is to ponding on the roadway, which can also lead to potential icing issues during the winter. It also creates an uneven driving surface, so as you drive along the road, it gets very bumpy, it's not ideal for plowing, the plow can catch an edge on the pavement, ripping up the pavement, and it can also lead to snow not being removed by the plow. What we looked at was some grading corrections in order to improve this design and improve upon what had been constructed last year. We provided increased grading information for the contractor to be able to build the job to standard, improving the cross slope and the profile slopes, again, to meet that standard. Itemized the pavement costs in order to help the contractor refine their costs themselves, and also updated technical specifications to clearly define that work for the contractor. So, with that said, the constructive improvements that would be constructed under this plan is to remove and replace some curbing along the roadway that was installed last year, but due to our grading corrections, does need to change. Mill and repave the roadway between the post office and White Pond Road, which is the end of the project. There is a small section of full-depth reconstruction at White Pond Road that does need to be completed in order to provide the proper pitch and the proper grading of the roadway. And then there's also sections of sidewalk that were previously installed last year, but due to some of the deficiencies in the design from last time, we do need to rebuild some of that sidewalk and reconstruct that. The estimated cost based off of ETNL's latest proposal for this work is about $560,000. Next slide, please. The second issue that we looked at was the capacity of the drainage system. Again, the original design did not meet MAST-DOT standards. We analyzed the system, we found that it barely had the capacity for the two-year storm. Per MAST-DOT standard, it should have the capacity of the 10-year storm. Again, this can lead to ponding on the roadway. It can lead, when water comes up out of the drainage system, if it doesn't have enough capacity, it can have the potential for hydroplaning, which is certainly a big safety issue. And also, if it floods enough, if the water comes up enough, that can have an impact on the abutters. What we ended up looking at was ways to expand the capacity of the drainage system, and what we came upon was an expanded infiltration system below the lower common. There was an infiltration system constructed as part of last year's improvements, and we're going to expand that to provide the capacity. There's also additional pipe below the roadway that does need to be upgraded, about 265 feet of that, in order to provide the proper capacity of the drainage system. There's also some other incidental items, such as a water quality unit, and of course, pavement, once we start digging in the road, we have to repair that pavement. We've done some more engineering work on that system. The cost of the system before, we had estimated quite a bit cheaper. That cost has gone up because of some of the soils that we found underneath the lower common were not what we had suspected. This was something that we would have expected to have been done with the previous design, some information that we did not have at the time. We now have that. So the system did have to get bigger because of those soils that we found. This would improve the storage to meet the 10-year storm, and we've also worked with the contractor and the working group to help provide some efficiencies in that design and make sure that it provides the capacity but isn't much bigger than what we need. The next slide is the additional drainage inlets. Again, the original design did not meet MAST-DOT standard in order to get the water to drain to the catch basin inlets. That has partly to do with the grading changes that we've made, but also to do with just the spacing of the catch basins themselves. It did not meet the spread requirements, which is when we talk about standing water at the curb when it rains very hard, you do get a spread across the roadway of the rainwater. This has a lot of the same issues as the—of the drainage system not having the proper capacity, which is hydroplaning, icing, and really can lead to potential safety issues out there. We performed a drainage analysis, made sure that we have the proper spacing. We've been working with the highway department to perform test pits—you may have seen them out there last week and also today—performing test pits to make sure the drainage structures that we're proposing can actually fit with all the different utilities that are out there, and make sure when this goes to construction, we don't have those sort of issues. I know there were some issues with that last year as well. The total design proposes five additional catch basins to accommodate the higher—with higher-capacity grates, also four new catch basins, and also associated repairs to curbing and the pavement when those are installed. The total cost based off ETNL's proposal is about $240,000 for those improvements. The next big issue we looked at was restoring the abutters properties. There are steep slopes at the back of sidewalk, down into the parking lots, and also some of the residential properties. There are steep driveways, some of the residential driveways, some of the residents are having trouble just getting into their driveway due to the steepness. We're seeing ponding at the back of the sidewalk where the sidewalk grade has come up, that's creating a ponding issue at the back of sidewalk. Also, some of the parking stalls on some of those parking lots that are close to roadway got shortened, so now those don't really meet the town standards for parking. There are also some mobility issues with some of the reduced driveway widths that we saw out there as a part of the previous design. So, we've done a lot of design work on those properties. We completed some additional surveys to make sure that we had all of the existing grades out there today. We've identified locations of ponding, we've worked through some alternatives, we've met with the property owners to make sure that what we're proposing helps meet their needs to the maximum extent practical, and we've worked with the lower design—the Lower Village Working Group—in order to really hone in on what those improvements are and how they fit in with the overall project. So, what we're proposing is regrading some of the parking lots and driveways, so those pitched to drain. We're also installing additional asphalt curb and granite curb to match the existing condition, to help tie those improvements in, so there isn't just a steep slope down into a parking lot, make sure that it looked like it was always meant to be. Restriping of the parking stalls where needed. Again, regrading some of the side slopes to make sure those aren't as steep off the back of the sidewalk, and also installing a few additional drainage inlets where required. Next slide, please. The last thing that we looked at was a review of the drainage—sorry, of the traffic analysis. This came out of some of the issues that were identified last year, which were turning movement issues at White Pond Road. At the last town meeting, the inability to take a right turn at Red Acre while someone was taking a left turn, that came up, so that's something we looked at, and also mobility issues in and out of the driveways. So, we have not done a traffic analysis ourself, a full traffic analysis, but what we did was a peer review of the previous engineer's traffic analysis. And despite some of the analysis not being what we would have done under standard engineering practice or what MAST-DOT would require as part of their projects, we did not find anything in their overall approach that would make us change any part of the overall traffic flow or design. There were some, like I said, some things that we would have done differently, but nothing of substantial—that would cause a substantial change. One thing that we also looked at was traffic signal warrants along the roadway. While we found one location at Great Road in Pomposidikit that would have met one of the warrants, overall, based off of what we're able to look at and what we know about the project, we would not recommend a signal at that location just because of meeting that one signal warrant. That is something that the engineering community looks at multiple factors when determining whether or not a signal goes into place. What we are proposing is some curb line modifications at White Pond Road to help the turning movements there, also improving some of the driveway accesses to improve mobility, widening those out as vehicles are entering and exiting, and also a review of the Red Acre intersection to help provide for that area for someone to take a right turn as vehicles are trying to take a left. Next slide, please. And then, this is just a synopsis of what we already talked about, some of the construction costs. Again, the roadway grading, $560,000, additional drainage inlets, $240,000. The closed drainage system improvements, $356,000. The improvements along the abutting properties is $88,000. There are some original construction costs, stuff that just had to be done no matter what, just final paving of the top course, signs, pavement markings. Those, based on ETNL's pricing, is $275,000. There's some remobilization costs coming back out to the site, traffic control. Based on ETNL's costs, those are $130,000. There is some work that the Town of Stowe is looking to complete. We had previously identified those. We'll have some additional discussion about some additional cost savings later on, but there's the—we estimated that work at $54,000. We do recommend a 10% contingency. As you know, when you start digging in the ground, or if you're building a house, you start ripping down walls, you never know what you're going to find. So we do recommend a construction contingency of 10%, $175,000. We estimate police details at $56,000 for the total cost of $1.9 million. So, Jesse.
Thank you, Tom. What I wanted to do was kind of just go through a brief history of the numbers here, just so we can kind of provide the context, you see where this has gone, and where it is today. So, just so you remember, back in 2017, in 2016, we got an $850,000 grant from Mass Works, which really kicked this thing into high gear. So, I just wanted to give you a breakdown of what our funding sources were back in May of 2017, approved here at town meeting. During construction, some costs were incurred as well. They were—we were able to gain a little bit more of the money from Mass Works to reach the statutory limit that they would provide a town with a population of under 7,000 people. And we also utilized some additional Chapter 90 monies, which are the state highway funds that the town is able to allocate to different projects, towards the tail end of the project to try to finish up some aspects at that time that we thought we could—that could get us to the finish line. The additional local funding tonight is obviously what we're here to talk about. So, at the very top is the original cost proposal that we received just a few days ago now from ETNL Corp. The one below is a revision that we got this afternoon after much discussion between ourselves, the working group, and members of ETNL, on how we could potentially, you know, look at some of the processes and construction aspects, how we could maybe shift some work to our own highway department to bring down the number a little bit more. From that proposal, we've added the 10% contingency, which is an important aspect of really any road project. Obviously, in pre-design, it's much higher, it has now come down to 10% to give you a new total with contingency. And then the line just above the bottom line is some extra funds that we are expecting to have left over from the construction the last time around, and a few funds that are going to be uncommitted from the previous Article 34 from the May town meeting allocation. And that gives us our final number of the construction funding allocation that we would need to get this project built according to the plan that we have right now. You can ignore the 30 cents. And, next slide, please. All right. And I'll have Tom talk a little bit about some of the cost savings.
Yeah. So we had, as I said before, we had identified some potential cost savings of a tune of about $56,000. That's that first two lines on the slide, with the town highway department forming the loaming seating and mulch to basically complete the improvements on the project, and also some slope work at Elm Ridge Road. Since then, we've identified some additional work that they could do to perform—to provide some additional savings, such as the expanded infiltration system in the common, which is off the roadway, performing the test pits, which they've already done. That's something that we had originally included for the contractor to do, but that's a savings that we've also identified that the highway department could do. There was a cost associated with the amount of time that the contractor would have to spend out there in order to remove some of the curbing that we need to remove for the grading corrections, and also some of the sidewalk that needs to be reconstructed. So that was something that we identified that the town highway department could do, and also some of the incidental landscaping improvements, and some of the work just to tie into the abutters and make them whole again. The number we have listed here is $172,000. That's not necessarily what the savings would be, but that's what the amount we would remove from what's paid to ETNL for those items. So, the actual cost to the town, that's not something that is entirely clear right now for those improvements, and that's something that we are working to do, but these are tasks and items that we've identified that could be done to the town to provide us savings. We've also identified and working with the contractor, some additional modifications to the drainage design, and some things that they could build a little bit easier to the tune of about $40,000. So that is something that we are looking at now to make sure that it would still meet the goals and the objects of the project.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Okay. So, I just—I have the slide up behind me regarding some of our start dates, our potential substantial completion date. I think it's really important to just speak plainly about how we got here. I think there, when you get rid of all of the MAST-DOT and the technical stuff, the question is, how did we end up in this place right now? And so, quickly, when we first embarked on this project, this was after about 10 years of planning. I know, folks in this room, I see many faces that we saw at forums, that responded to surveys that came out, offered some good feedback. We did plenty of that for many years. When we decided to hire a design engineer to push this project forward, we knew that we had done enough due diligence to that point to understand that the roadway out there needed a new drainage system, that we needed to improve the pedestrian experience, that we needed to improve the traffic congestion. These were all things that we've talked about time and time again. When we went out to bid for those contractors, we got several responses—I think it was a dozen in all. And typically, what we do is we create a selection committee, and we go through the process of reviewing all those different bids that we get and all those different proposals. And we got a lot of them, and we looked at a lot of good firms. And the one that we chose was an excellent proposal at the time. It had all of the elements that we were looking for. They were hitting on all of the types of things that we needed to work on. They worked with small towns, had done a lot of complete streets elements and projects, had shared a lot of similar work from similar-sized towns, provided their references, they had all the licenses, the certifications, everything you would need to do that kind of work. And our selection committee looked it over, we scored it, just like Mastad or the State Procurement Office likes you to do, and we chose them. And we continued to work with them and go through those plans, and for those folks who might have been a part of that, there was quite a bit of back and forth about refining that plan until it was really ready, especially once we got the Mass Works grant. Because once we got the grant, we suddenly were locked into a timeline, and we really needed to move, and we were able to get those plans up to 100% design. So, the issues that we really encountered on those plans were not the kinds of things that we could easily talk about and look at and compare to other plans. They weren't the types of things that we talked about in our planning sessions and in our forums. Instead, they were the minute details that hide underneath most of that, and that is with the grading—the grading itself of the roadway, the drainage calculations that we were relying on. When we asked for proposals, we wanted them to meet MAST-DOT format, and the firm we hired said that they would, and indicated that they did. And so we continued to move forward. So, once we obviously got going, we started construction. It was one of the most exciting times. We had worked on this for a really long time. We got about halfway through when we started realizing that things weren't adding up. The contractor could note it, we could note it. We asked that engineer to go back and fix the problem, fix it, make the grades work. You know, this was your design, fix it, we need to move forward, we're on a timeline here. And we did that on multiple occasions. And as we know, in October, the end of October, early November, we realized that we had lost complete confidence that they were— lost complete confidence that they were able to do that and that they could do it in time. And at that point, we decided that the worst thing that we could do was fully construct this project or force it through, and then have to go back and rip it up in its entirety. Now, there are aspects that obviously we have to go back and take out and redo, but at the time, we needed to make the call of, do we feel confident that we can put this down, and that it's going to stand the test of time, and it's going to do what we intended it to do? Are we going to come back two years later and find a road that's still ponding, that's deteriorating just as badly? So, that was in November. I believe everyone got the reverse 911 call explaining the stall. Since that time, we've been working ever since. We hired Green in March of this year. Even at that time, when we stalled, when we decided that the project had to stop because we had to figure out what was going on, we didn't have the technical expertise in-house at that time. We knew enough that something was wrong, but we really needed another engineer. We found that in Green International affiliates. We worked with Places Associates to be able to help us along with that, too. Immediately, we were able to bring them on, just because we have a relationship with them that could help us even understand what is it that we want to ask Green International to do. So, that was, you know, hugely valuable. But, I just wanted to kind of to explain what that kind of looked like as things unraveled, and the kind of expertise that we needed to quickly get to be able to understand technical details that typically, you know, a small town like Stowe doesn't, may not have that in-house. So, so I think one of the things, just to wrap this up, you know, we've, we've got a project now. Some of the aspects of this project are things that are difference of magnitude. There was quantities that were not quite right in the first one. So, you know, maybe the project was a little bit bigger than we had been told. On other, in other aspects, there are some things that we have to pull up and redo. So, there's some mistakes that have to be corrected. So, there's not, it's no way to fit it into one box. It's a lot of different things that kind of come together to give us the cost here. And, you know, it's not lost on us, and certainly myself, looking around this room. I've spoken to you many times that we have no doubt lost a lot of trust in the ability to move projects like this forward, especially for a small town, to be able to get a grant, move a project, get it done, complete it. I think, you know, personally, I'm hoping that we can pull this off, bring it back up to the standard we all expected, that it will function in the way that we intended, and that we'll be happy with the product when it's over, and that we'll be able to continue to move on and take a look at some of these other projects that are already out in the pipeline. Smaller they may be, but nonetheless, you know, we're going to need to continue to work and, you know, take some time to prove that we can still do good projects that a lot of people in town want to see happen. And so, I know that's going to take some time, and I'm not expecting everybody to, you know, jump right on board for the next thing. But, I think the worst thing right now is to, you know, let the, the past designer really be able to stop us from kind of keep moving forward. So, our eyes are on this right now. I believe that, and the working group believes, our engineers that are working with us believe that we've got the right plan to pull this off this time, and we're, we're happy to answer questions.
We have two microphones up front. If anyone has any comments or questions. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hi, Judy Toop from Harvard Road. So, I saw repeated slides saying that the design did not meet MasDOT standards. Was that part of the contract, that it would meet such standards?
I'm going to try to answer that, and if you need to add anything. It wasn't necessarily in the contract, but it was in our request for proposals, that the design would meet the MasDOT format, and that was our expectation.
It seems to me that ought to be part of any and all contracts going forward. I'd like assurances that something like this doesn't happen again.
I mean, there's no question, we've looked at some of our contracting, we've had some discussions about where that was, but typically, you know, there are things, there are certainly things we can do, and some lessons learned, and things we're going to be looking at. So, yeah.
Well, I certainly hope that's one of them. I don't get to vote on every contract, but I would not give my vote for any contract that does not meet proper design standards.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Yeah, my name's Ed Brown, 26 Heather Lane. I haven't heard anything about a project manager. Who or what firm is going to manage the project to make certain that the interferences and rework are done away with, and that efficiency takes the top priority? Who is going to do it?
So, we've got a two-tiered approach here. So, we're, we've got two things we're going to do. We've hired Green International to be the construction administration on the project. So, to make, given that they did the redesign, we've asked them to work with ETNL onsite to be able to manage the day-to-day with them, and help describe to us anything that may come up, scheduling, things like that. And we've also, working with Sue Carter, standing next to me, of Places Associates, to help us as well.
Has Green managed projects like this before? I mean, really managed?
Yes, yes. Benny.
Okay.
Yes, sir, over here.
Don McFarlane, Boxborough Road. Let me ask my proverbial question. You've put two new sections of sidewalk in. Will I be able to walk on those sidewalks in the winter? Will it be plowed? And will those safety islands be accessible so one can park at Shaw's and want to go across the street and walk on the sidewalk to approach the bank or someplace else? Or do I have to go back out on the 117, as I do now? I'll ask that same question. I hope we'll fund it this time. We're putting off about $3 million. A few dollars more to plow would be very, very nice.
As of right now, like I've said in the past, Stowe is, has three-season sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. Mr. Moderator, with all due respect, to quote a wise phrase, "Well, here's another fine mess you've gotten us into." It is so tempting, 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 tempting to say no. And I have struggled with this. But, if we do say no, guess what? We're going to be back here in a year. No offense to everybody, listening to the same presentations by the same people, asking us for the same money, and hope like goodness you're not going to ask us for more money because of increasing costs. In the meantime, in the meantime, based on the year, our cars are continuing to take a beating every time we go through Lower Village. But, more important to me, I find it incredibly embarrassing. When I have out-of-town guests come into town, and they round the corner from Aitken to Stowe, they're greeted with a mess. And that's not the town that we live in, that's not the town we want. No matter how hard we try, no matter how hard we wish for it, as I call it, the construction fairy is not going to come down, snap her fingers, and make this thing go away. We are the only ones who can make this go away. During the 2016 election, a family member of mine who was very unhappy with the options said, "I'm going to hold my nose and vote for ..." Well, tonight, I'm not happy with the options, but I am going to hold my nose, and I am going to vote to support this project. And I hope there's others in this room who will also hold their nose and vote to support this project.
Thank you. I'm going to take this gentleman over here. Yes, sir. I think you were in line first. Right?
Warren Nelson, 213 Boxborough Road. Just want to tell my, the residents of this-
A little closer to the mic, please.
The residents of this town. This roadway is .05 miles. That's a half a mile. At present structure, what it cost us before, we're going to spend $760,000 per one-tenth of a mile to do this project. I get a little confused with your planning board director, because we've sat at so many meetings with him, and every other time, it's a different price, different conclusion, different everything else. He was asked the last time what the bid was for the original price. He would not give me a price. I went down and got a bid. It was $1,590,000. This time around, we're going to spend $1.9 million for the project and not go out for bid. I think it's insane. I, I, I just can't believe that this town can just blow through money like they did. We had a design the first time. It never got run by the DOT. In August of last year, I started calling the DOT up in Worcester because I could see there was problems. I was taught a lot a time ago that water doesn't run uphill. And where these drains were, it wasn't going to go uphill and downhill the way they were supposed to do it. I kept talking to DOT, DOT check. There was no reference that anybody from this town, or anybody talked to DOT for the standards, looked at our plans, or anything else. Now, these gentlemen from Greenway, all they talk about is DOT standards. Have they run the plans by DOT? They can go out to District 3 out in Worcester, sit down with them and go over the plans. I would think before we vote on this, somebody else besides them telling us about the standards, that we invest some time, take a ride out, I'll be happy to give you the name of the person to call, Ann Sullivan's the engineer out there, get somebody to look at it before we spend another $2.1 million like we did the last time, and $1.9 million this time. That leaves us the $760,000 per one-tenth of a mile. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Peter McManus, Red Acre Road. Question I have for the town administrator, probably. I, I realize we're not voting on the terms of the borrowing, but do you have some idea what, what the plan is to repay the million? What's the, the length of the term, I guess is my real question.
Mr. Wrigley would be the correct person to answer that.
I have answers to all your questions.
And also, the plan to repay the free cash and stabilization? If we're going to-
Just happen to have the answers for you.
Right. I know I was asking the right guy.
I did it late this afternoon, because that's when I got the numbers, but they're accurate. They're accurate. It may not be precise, but they're accurate. So, the term is going to be 15 years. It's not going to be debt-excluded, obviously, so it's going to be an annual debt payment that we pay within the operating budget. I took the original $492,000 that had been borrowed, added the new amount to it, to get an estimated annual cost increase on an average valued home for taxes. It's $57. The free cash and stabilization fund, which are our stored assets, I've got a current number of 3.7-plus million. We're trying to maintain the sweet spot of about 10% of our stored assets as a percentage of the total annual expenditures. And I'm using 2019 numbers because that's all I have, both for the tax impact and also for the percentage on the expenditure. And I looked at this, in, in putting this together, I've decided that sourcing it three ways. The fourth one that I could have considered, I considered and rejected, which is direct tax appropriation. I'm trying to provide some savings to the taxpayer, and the impact would have been larger if I applied some amount of money directly to the tax rate. So, I expect that we'll be at just under 9% if we expend this million dollars in addition to what we spent at the annual town meeting. But, at the same time, looking at what I expect, we'll replenish during the upcoming months and for the next, when we tie the books out and we get certified free cash in the fall, I expect us to be back at or above 10%. In part, because I know some money that we have, for example, $282,000, that currently DOR has mistakenly put on as being a free cash expenditure when it's an available fund, but it's cash on hand. They misunderstood the vote at town meeting for the Chapter 90. So, that's in my pocket, and with the givebacks and tax liens and others, we're not going to spend as much this year as we did last year. We spent over $1.1 million for free cash, well, free cash essentially, no stabilization. So, we're spending less. I'll replenish more. We should get back to the 10% in the fall.
Okay, good. Just, thank you.
Thank you.
One follow-up.
Well, I'm going to take a person over here for a second. We're over the, the time. We'll get back to you. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, I just was, wanted to ask Jesse the numbers of the totals of, that we have expended. Did this include the $135,000 that we put in for design funds for this May?
No, I only included the construction funds.
Only, only the construction in the total? And, so, what, the number, what we've already expended and what we're going to expend now is close to 4 million, or over 4 million?
Add in, if you were to go back and add in design funds for this, yes. I think it would be. I don't have that number in front of me at the moment.
I was just using the totals on these pages. And then, I'll have a follow-up after Mr. McManus.
Okay. I'll take this voter here first, a new voice. Yes, ma'am.
Well, a couple of things. My name is Valerie Pedersen. I live on 77 Elm Ridge Road. There's two things that are kind of, I want to say. One is, I really don't understand, if I had worked out on my house, and I had something done, and I paid a certain amount, and they said, "No, no, no, we did this all wrong. We've got to charge you the same thing, almost the same thing again, to do pretty much the same work, but better, a little better." And I have that to say. And number two, I don't think we got an answer from this guy who was asking about the DOT and if, and if a visit has been taken to the DOT office in Worcester. So, I'd like to have that, you know, question answered.
Do we have an answer for that?
Yeah. As far as the, I think the first question was, you know, I think maybe there's, I just want to clarify that we had a previous designer that had worked on the plan. We're currently following up with them, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and, and the legal matters right now. And we had to hire another engineering firm to tell us what was the extent of what they did wrong, and how would you, how can you show us how to fix it? And so, the last several months have been working with that designer, with Places Associates, with the working group, to try to turn over every single rock that we can to figure out, not just, oh, tell us how to do it, yep, it's double, we have to do it again and take that, but to really question every single assumption that comes up, to do as much due diligence as we can from a technical angle. And that's why we've, you know, typically in the past, you know, you, you know, you don't have a peer reviewer reviewing the professional engineer that you hire and, and get a sense of, oh, that's what we're doing in this case. So, we have kind of two elements there. So, yes, they, they did have to redo elements of the work, but we've looked at every angle we could. As far as the MasDOT thing, I don't know if it's maybe a little more helpful. Tom, if you want to just kind of talk about how you deal with that. The, our design has not been brought in front of MasDOT for their sign-off or approval. On any town job, town-owned roadway, that's not something, a process I've ever been through. And I don't believe MasDOT has a process for that because it's not their road. So, it's not something they would typically do. But, what they do have is a design guide that spells it out for how they would do their project, and we follow it for municipal projects, and that's how, what we've used to, to develop our plans for this, and we're very familiar with the requirements of that, and, and that's what we have used to, to determine that it meets their design requirements.
And so, is the DOT, is the DOT going to come and review? Like, it sounds like they did that the last time. They came and reviewed the road and saw that it didn't meet their standards, and, but, and because we didn't go to them, but now, we're not going to exactly go to them because...
I, I don't believe they ever reviewed the plans, right, from, from the previous engineer?
I think, when you were talking, you were saying about that it didn't meet DOT standards from what was done previously.
We had, we reviewed what had previously been designed and constructed, and we were the ones that had, had provided that analysis to the town and made that determination.
So, you were the one who presented the DOT standards? Just wondering.
Yes, yes, we were the ones that, that made that determination.
Yeah, without going to the DOT in Worcester. Yeah.
Correct.
And you're not going to go to the DOT again?
Correct. And I don't believe they would review it.
Thank you. I, yes, Mr. McManus, you had another question.
Mr. Wrigley, so, did I hear you right, that the appropriation from the beginning of this town meeting is going to be added to this million and borrowed, so we're borrowing closer to a million and a half? Is that what he said?
I don't believe I put it in those terms, but we borrowed $492,000. We've already borrowed that. We're already making an interest payment on it. This million-
That was outside the levy, right?
Yes, that was a debt-excluded question. But, what I did to get the average impact on the tax bill is I add the two together.
Thank you. Yes, over here.
So, I'm in agreement with Deb Woods. I'm not very thrilled to have to pay this amount of money, but it needs to be done. I'm hoping that we never get in this position again, and it's very hard to take this amount of money on this one single project, and that it doesn't complete some of the issues that were found to be in Lower Village previously, from previous Lower Village- from previous Lower Village planning, and especially the 2011 Lower Village Committee report about Red Acre Road, about sidewalks, about the aesthetics and making it look like a village. There's an awful lot of asphalt down there, and it's going to be more. So, anyway, I'm in favor of voting for this project very reluctantly.
Mr. McManus?
Yeah, one more. He said when we took the state money, that it triggered both the timeline and the DOT standards. Understand the DOT is not actively inspecting it, but, and that it wasn't built to those standards. I'm still confused on how that happened. Was the representation made to you by the engineer that what was put in did meet DOT standards?
As in terms of the...
I'm sorry, in terms of the drainage?
In terms of the drainage, prior to design, the representation was that we had a plan that met exactly what we asked for, that it was in MassDOT format.
Was it a 10-year storm?
We expected that it would meet 10-year standards. We didn't find out until later that it was only designed to the two-year.
You could ask the engineers, the 12-inch pipes in there, is that ever going to handle a 10-year storm? I don't mean on this side, but I mean generally.
It all depends on how much water is flowing to it. And typically, as your drainage system picks up more water, you increase capacity, you increase the drainage size. So, it would depend on where in the drainage system you're asking about that 12-inch pipe.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Town Porche, Red Acre Road. I understand that you're at 100% design completion. Are those design plans available for review by the townspeople?
Yes, we have a copy at the planning office now.
So, where would I find them?
You can come to the third floor, and I will show them to you. Yep, yep. Third floor of the town building.
Yes, ma'am.
Wendy Bachman, 28 Lowell Drive. We're spending money to correct a lot of problems caused by poor design and poor construction. What is the status of legal work, you know, any legal action against those firms, and how much money can we expect to recover?
Mr. Salvi, could you answer that, please?
Thank you for asking that, Ms. Bachman. I just wanted to make something clear, that we said at the last session of town meeting, and that I think Jesse alluded to, of course, the town is pursuing its legal remedies against the first engineer. The complaint hasn't been filed yet, but a demand letter was sent and a response received, and the next step is to file a complaint. And that should be happening fairly quickly. As Jesse said, part of the necessary work you have to do in this kind of thing is to figure out what your damages are. So, figuring out how much you have to spend to get the thing you should have gotten originally is actually part of the litigation. And you need to kind of go down that road a bit before you can file your complaint to know what to ask for. And then you ask, how much will we recover? I can't answer that question. We will recover as much as we possibly can. This will be pursued vigorously, and the town's interests will be defended as well as they possibly can be.
So, is it correct to say that some people here are saying we're spending more money to correct, you know, the problems, and now the sum is huge, but we hope in the end to recover a good portion of that? And, maybe the result won't be so bad in the long run?
So, I'm going to answer this, and subject to town council correcting me, but in a contract action, you sue for the difference that, you sue for what you lost, and you hope that by getting paid an amount, you're put back into the position that you should have been in, had the first, had that party not breached the contract. Is that fair? And then, of course, we're also going to be pursuing treble damages, multiple damages, under something called Chapter 93A, unfair and deceptive trade practices. I don't want to go into all that detail, but it's just an example, and you can also get attorney's fees under 93A, I believe. We're pursuing everything we can, but nobody can be guaranteed. You can't count on anything. It's litigation. But you can count on it being prosecuted as vigorously as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Warren Nelson, again from Boxborough Road. Couple of quick things on your bid from 2018. The job was stopped. If you look at the line items of the bid by ETNL, they never completed them. One, there was about $250,000 of asphalt that was never put down. Have we retained or got that back from ETNL?
Mr. Stedman?
Yeah, some of that work that wasn't done was because the project was halted. So, that's why it wasn't completed last year.
Did you pay ETNL for that work that wasn't completed?
It's, the way the unit bid works is, they didn't put it down, so they weren't technically paid for that work.
Well, if you go back to their bid and you go back to the line items, and check off the line items that they have for all this thing, it comes over to $300,000. Warm asphalt put down for sidewalks, they never put that down. Asphalt for the final paving of the road, they never put that down. So, Jesse, you told me that the last cost, the end of last year, was $2,100,000. So, their bid was $1,590,000. Why haven't we got the money back from them? Second question I have is, your new designer is so worried about the abutters off the roadway. I've lived here since '83. Rich Presty's driveway has flooded since 1983. He's made no effort to fix it. We're going to go in as a town and fix his property up after him not fixing it? He just had heavy construction in there, putting a new septic system in, and we're going to go across his road and do that? Why are you doing that?
I'll answer the second one first. The only reason, the only reason we are going into any abutting properties is to correct issues that became apparent after the project was put in place. So, specifically, there were cross-sections that, upon looking back at it, you could realize that there were certain, the ponding issues that were showing up were no big surprise, that there was water trapped. That was something that the previous engineer designed, it was implemented, and they didn't have, they didn't do the due diligence to catch that and to look at how those properties were going to drain into what they were designing. We feel it's necessary to go back and to correct that. And there are small little things across multiple properties down there that this project specifically created, that we feel is important to make those abutters whole. They gave us temporary construction easements, and we promised that we would clean it up and we would fix it. And that's what we intend to do.
Well, basically, if your designer was here in 1987 and 19, 2017, 2000, you'd see there's a bunch of trees planted in front of those buildings. They were all on a berm. They were up about two, two feet off the ground. So, water could not run out of that parking lot. It wouldn't make any difference. If you went down to that parking lot now and went up to the back part of Rich Presty's land, you'll see he had all kinds of heavy equipment in there, regrading it off, taking it out. If you look at the bottom of the roadway, you'll see all that water running down from Rich Presty's land. I just have problems believing that we, as a town, you've got 12 feet of property, and we're going to go in and fix their property up. I don't think we should spend $170,000 to fix their property when he can fix it quite easy. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, over here.
Robert Toop, 82 Harvard Road. I have a question about the previous gentleman who just asked a question, and that is, the property that he's talking about is where the Beef and Ale was, next to the Bank of America?
I think he was referring to 92 Great Road, which is owned by...
What?
I think he's referring to the property that has Infinite Auto on it right now, which is owned by Rich Presty. I heard him mention Rich Presty's name.
What about the property next door where the Beef and Ale was, and the lot that has the Bank of America office next to it? There's been a bunch of work done in the last month on that property and the land that's up a hill next to it and behind it. Is that the same property?
No, that's a different...
Don't give me numbers and names of people, because I don't know them.
It's a separate parcel, and it's work that's unrelated to the property.
Yeah, that seems pretty foolish for him to be doing that while we're still unclear about what we're going to do and how much money we're going to spend. Seems to me it's a liability, as was pointed out. Now, I want to raise my original question. While, is it Tom? Okay, while Tom was going through Green International's slides on what each component of the project, what its problems were, and what it would cost to remediate them, I was writing the numbers down. And after you were done, we came to a slide that had all those same numbers on a single slide in a chart. And the numbers don't match the descriptions. I want to know which is which, which is correct. For example, we had road redesign and fix, 239, 140.
If you could go back to the one that has all the, all the rows on it, please.
More, 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 more. Yeah.
This, this is the correct slide. This is, these are the correct costs right here.
These, this is what you agree to?
Yes.
These are the numbers that you provided?
These are, these are the breakdowns based off of what ETNL provided.
Okay, maybe I wasn't paying enough attention, but when I got to the slide, I was surprised to see what I had been writing down didn't match. So, the grading is 558.
Correct.
The drainage inlets, that's adding four more, and replacing five, or... The closed drainage system is the thing that's under the lower common itself, right?
Correct. That's the 356.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Contract construction costs, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
If there was a difference, I'm sure it was because we had estimated costs based off our estimate on Thursday night, and that was probably just amiss.
Okay, it wasn't, it wasn't a matter of a few thousand dollars one way or the other. It was like the titles and the numbers didn't match at all, but I'm satisfied. So, my original point about what my predecessor speaker said about the property that's between Infinity Lavo and Bank of America, I think remains a valid point, and I second that.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Dick Perkins, 333 Red Acre Road. This is probably a question for Mr. Salvi again. What are the insurance limits that the prior engineer has? In other words, are they judgment-proof, or do we really have a chance of getting money back?
Mr. Salvi, are you able to answer that?
Mr. Perkins, I don't know their insurance limits. They, I would be extremely surprised to find that they are judgment-proof. They have been doing business for years, they continue to do business with the Commonwealth. That seems very unlikely. And I'm sure that they do have insurance. I don't have that answer right now, though.
We should get it, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Valentina Weber from Red Acre Road. If it's appropriate, Mr. Moderator, I would like to call the question.
Calling the question is a motion to end debate and proceed to a vote on the main motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. I'll ask if there's a second for that. Do we have a second? There's no debate on this. It requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of ending debate at this time, please raise your cards. All opposed to ending debate, please raise your cards. Keep them up high. I'm going to... So, all in favor, please raise your cards again. I'm going to call that greater than two-thirds, and so, debate is ended, and we will proceed to a vote, unless anyone would like to challenge my count and have a counted vote. Seeing none...
Mr. Moderator, I would challenge the vote, or I would ask the moderators...
I would, well, by challenging the vote, that means we'll do a counted vote of...
Or I could ask the moderators, indulge us and let one last speaker speak, and then...
No, we're, we, not after a vote to end debate, I'm sorry. Are there seven people who would like to do a counted vote on whether, well, six other voters who would like a counted vote on whether to end debate? Please raise your cards. I'm not seeing six other voters, so my call of a two-thirds in favor of ending debate will stand. My apologies. So, now going to a vote, because this both involves taking money from stabilization and also borrowing, both of those require a two-thirds vote. So, to pass the motion on the floor to fund this project, it will require a two-thirds vote of this meeting. Does everyone understand that? I'm going to add in one other little bit of information. Usually, when we borrow, there was a, there was a couple of comments about debt exclusions. That's a separate vote that we take occasionally at an election. This debt is not a debt exclusion, so for those that follow town finances, it's a vote to borrow inside of Proposition 2 and 1/2. There will be no election in a vote unless, I suppose, down the road, the selectman could choose to put it to the voters, but there's no plan that I know of at this time. Anyways, this will require a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please, of the motion to borrow and transfer this money, please raise your All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that clearly, not a, not close to unanimous, but clearly two-thirds in favor. And again, if seven voters wish to, you can call for a counted vote, but I don't think that would pass based on the votes that I saw. So, I will declare that the motion under Article 34 passes, again, unless anyone wishes to call for a counted vote. And, two quick, or one quick thing before we move on, we have a number of small articles related to this that'd be useful to pass. I didn't want to say anything during the debate, but I personally like to thank ETNL on behalf of the town. I'm sure most construction companies that would have been faced with the problems with this would have simply pulled up and walked away. And so, if you know anyone that works in ETNL, thank them that they were willing to stay with us through this process. Now, moving on, do we have a motion for Article 46? I'm, yeah, 46.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Article 47 as printed in the warrant.
I'm sorry, which article?
46. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Article 46 as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion to second? Does everyone have a warrant? If you don't, there are additional warrants, I believe, available. There's a couple more. I have three warrants if someone needs one. Mr. Stedman, can you explain what this and these, these other articles are?
Sure, thank you. Article 46 through 53 are, basically, they're temporary construction easements to extend what we thought could have expired by now, and often did expire. So, we're extending a bunch of the easements so that folks with ETNL can actually step onto people's property, extend and connect driveways, put in the sidewalks, do the work that you need. You need a little extra room to get in there and move around and construct the improvements, and that's what these easements are. These are very similar to what we approved in 2017, and then later on, we worked with the abutters, specifically, who were subject to these, to actually come to agreement on the easement. Town meeting needs to approve them, and so, we, in this instance, as in 2017, we approved them ahead of getting the final approval from that property owner. So, it's a matter of process.
Before we take any debate, do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee on Article 47? 46, oh.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions or other comments on the motion under Article 46? Seeing none, I'm going to call this as a two-thirds vote. Seeing none, I'm going to call this as a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, I will call it unanimously in favor and the motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town accept Article 47 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval for this article.
Thank you. Is there any questions or other debate? Seeing none, this is again a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, I will call that unanimously in favor and the motion passes. Article 48.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Article 48 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
And again, Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Is there any debate on the motion under Article 48? Seeing none, this is again a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, I will call that unanimously in favor and the motion passes. Article 49.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Article 49 as printed in the warrant.
And Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval.
Is there any debate? Again, this is a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, I will call that passes unanimously. Article 50.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town accept the easement as listed in Article 50 of the warrant and as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval.
Thank you. Any debate? Again, this is a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, I will again call that passes by unanimous vote. Article 51.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Article 51 as printed in the warrant.
And Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends for approval of this article.
Is there any debate on the motion under Article 51? Seeing none, again, this is a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, and again, I will call that as passes by unanimous vote. Article 52.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Article 52 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article for approval.
And is there any debate? Seeing none, again, this is two-thirds. All in favor, all opposed, and I will call that passes unanimously. Article 53.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Article 53 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends for, recommends this article for approval.
And again, any debate? Seeing none, this is again a two-thirds. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, I will call that passes unanimously. And I believe we have now taken action on every article in the annual warrant. I'd like to thank everyone for coming for an additional night. And again, thanks, DO TV, for the sound system and all the volunteers who have helped. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move we adjourn town meeting.
We have a motion to dissolve this meeting. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, I will call that unanimously in favor and the meeting is ended. Thanks again.[1781.21][1781.21][applause]